This time we'd like to call the Shreveport City Council meeting to order June 13th, 2022. We ask that if you have your cell phones, if you would put them on silence or turn them off this particular time, we're going to ask that Chief Crawford come up and lead us in prayer. We're going to ask that Councilman Nicholson would lead us in the pledge. Chief, come and lead us in prayer.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, usually I like a little warning about having to give a prayer. I'm not a man of the cloth, so I don't have one in my back pocket, but I'm going to do my best.
Jesus just told me, Chief.
Let us bow our heads and speak to our Heavenly Father. Lord, we're so appreciative to be in this meeting this afternoon for the governance of our city. We ask that you look over us, guide us and direct us in all that's pleasing to you for the citizens that we have here, the challenges that we can overcome with the collective thoughts and efforts of all of the mind power that we have in this room and beyond there. Lord, there's nothing that we can overcome without you in the lead and with you in the lead. So with that being said, let us say thank you, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please place the flag to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the row?
Councilwoman Taylor. Councilwoman Ford.
Here.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
President.
Councilwoman Burks. Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Ball.
Thank you. Tomorrow I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of administrative conference and special meeting Monday, May 23rd, 2022, and the City Council meeting Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. Does any member of the council have any awards of recognition or distinguished guests today? Thank you. Mr. Whitehorn, do you all have any distinguished guests or awards of recognition today?
We'll have some tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do you have any other communications from the mayor at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Reports, does any member have any questions about property standards? Mr. Green is here. Any questions for Mr. Green? Seeing there's none, thank you, Mr. Green.
All right.
I thought I saw Gary. Gary?
Yes.
Gary, I just got a call from Mrs. Youngblood. She lives at 4106 Evers Drive, and behind the house, there's a field that we cut, but it also has some trees. And she said the limbs are falling over into her backyard off of those trees. Have you checked in that for me? I really would appreciate it.
Ms. Youngblood?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
4106 Evers.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Burks, do you think so? Do you want us, do you have any awards or anything today?
Tomorrow I'll have a street dedication.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Will there be a revenue plan tomorrow, implication?
Yes, sir, will.
Thank you. See, there are no public hearings. Mr. Whitehorn, will there be any legislation added tomorrow?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Today we will hear public comments on non-item agenda and also agenda items. Those that request to speak, we ask that you would be kind enough to limit your speaking to three minutes. The first person that we have is Mr. Craig B. Lee.
Craig Lee, 1112 Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Just want to encourage the council, 22 years ago, we, myself, my team, Willie Bradford, Attorney Larry English, Councilman Herry Huckabee, and Councilman Joe Shine, we advocated to create District B into a majority African-American district, which it is today based on the 2000 census data. And today I advocate for Plan 9B that is coming from myself, being the chairperson of Pay the Political Advocates for Independent Democracy and Lace, the Liberation Advocates for Community Empowerment. It is our belief that Shreveport, which stands roughly at 57 to 60% African-Americans, should reflect the demographics of the city, and that is the plan that we are endorsing, Plan 9B. And we hope that the majority of the council will roll with that recommendation as we get into the discussion of redistricting for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 121, Shreveport, 71118. I stand before you all, councilpersons, to speak to three of your agenda items, items number 84, 85, and 86. I'll start with 85 and 86 first because as I read the background information, there seems to have been or is going on a rejecting of a bid, but seemingly the bid must have been submitted incorrectly. I want to know if anyone reached out from that particular department to address that issue because that means that there are now two swimming pools that are not being utilized for the children this summer, as of today. Then when I looked at Resolution 84, I was like, Lord, why do we need Hellcats here in the city of Shreveport? Didn't we just buy vehicles not more than a couple of years ago? But more than that, who will we be chasing with a Hellcat? And you gotta be chasing somebody to be paying $80,000 per car, which makes no sense at all. And that doesn't include the package that goes along with the car. Then I saw the emergency that was attached to this resolution. What is the emergency? Yes, we do have crime, and it's rapid. But then we also have 90 cameras that the city owns that has not been installed. Now, the going conversation was, we don't own the poles, so we can't impose ourselves on those poles without proper authorization. Have you gotten it yet? See, it seems like we got the horse before, not the cart before the horse in all of this. And we, or me, a constituent, would like to know what's really going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn Summers, I believe, pronouncing that's right.
Thank you. I'm Autumn Summers. I don't anticipate to speak more than three minutes, but if I do, I do ask that I get a little bit of an extension because what I'm speaking about is very important. Again, my name is Autumn Summers. I'm the Chair of the People's Promise Youth Division, and I am 18 years old. I just graduated high school, and I should not be here today. But I'm here to plead with you to do something about the rampant gun violence in Shreveport. The simple fact is that too many children die from stray bullets while just sitting in their homes simply because they live in Shreveport. Too many children get caught up in the wrong crowd. They get caught up in gangs, and they get shot by their teenage peers because our city has not done enough to save our children, our children, from guns. I am not the only young person here. There's a 14-year-old I brought here with me because she is scared to walk the streets of Shreveport by herself during the day. During the day, she is scared because there are way too many guns here, and there are way too little regulations on what we do with our civilians. Why is it so easy to shoot up a street in Shreveport? Why is it so easy to carry a gun anywhere? Why are there so little regulations when so many people are dying? There are few states, there are few cities, that Shreveport is more dangerous than. I am here to plead with you as somebody who plans to come back to Shreveport when I'm older to help it. I'm here to plead with you to do the job that you signed up for, a job to protect and serve the people that you represent here. I'm not here to say that we need to ban guns or to take the rights of people away. I'm not here to say that. I'm here to say that we need to do something because what we're doing right now is not working. Whatever we're doing right now is not enough. And I can tell you that because there are way too many dead children that have been shot and killed by stray bullets or by gang violence or by loose guns. And again, I'm not here to say to ban all guns. I'm saying we need to do something. And I'm saying that it's your job, it's what you signed up for, and that's what I expect from you, and that's what everyone in this room expects from you. Thank you.
Doris Stirren?
Stevens.
Stevens?
Stevens.
Stevens, Doris Stevens, I'm sorry.
Doris Stevens, 2314 Darien Street. I had a stroke in it. It may take a little time, but I don't want to be up in too much. I got to go back to 1991. I had a Cadillac in my driveway. That's what I was driving, a Cadillac in 1991, and that was when police were coming through the neighborhood. Well, I witnessed a killing of a young black man when I'm chasing him. He got out his car, had his hand up, and killed him. The next week, the mayor was on TV saying, quit going through the neighborhood chasing cars. You may, you know, hurt people or whatever, you know. But anyway, I was on my way to New York, three days. I'm going to New York. My car is in the driveway. They chasing the car through the neighborhood. It ran and hit my car and hurt, had my car in the middle of the street going this way. And we all ran outdoors to see what's going on in my car for a whole year. I'm in New York, but I went through risk management. I went through the whole change of command, a whole year. You didn't do nothing for me and my car. And it was in my own driveway, on my property. Okay, so that's 2019, 2020. I come back home. I bought me a 2003 automobile. Your streets here is terrible. I-49, 20, 3132, and in the infrastructure, ugh, of Shreveport. You ain't got one street worth nothing. It done tore my car up. I talked to Mr. Hunter, and I don't know why you think people that live in the ghetto are ignorant and crazy. We ain't crazy. We can handle your job, we can handle the mayor's job and do a better job. He gonna tell me that the streets didn't do the rust up under my car. I know it didn't. It pulled down the welling job that had my car together. I've been in that car a whole year around here, bumping up, bumping up, bumping up. And you don't know you done hit something until you done hit it. Streets is terrible here. So my car now is in a place, and I want to know what is, what is the city of Shreveport gonna do because it's the second car. You talking for me. I'm 73 years old. I don't have that kind of money to be buying cars. I want something done with this car here. You didn't do nothing for my Cadillac. And the police, that was chasing the car. The people got out their car and ran from them. They couldn't even run and catch them. So I have to agree with this little lady. You ain't doing nothing. You just holding position for a check or something, but you ain't doing nothing in this city. Nothing. Every time I go and come back a year or two, the same thing, same people, ain't doing nothing. But you getting a paycheck. I bet you ain't say, well, put this in a, in a fund for whatever come up. You ain't do that. I want to know what gonna happen to my car. And I want the mayor, where is he at? But I want the mayor, I want, Ms. LeBeck is my councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want something done.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. I want something done for this second car.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. The first name spells D-E-R-E-S-H Sardar, I believe.
Hello, City Council. I'm Deve Sardar on behalf of the People's Promise Youth Division. Can y'all hear me? I'm Deve Sardar, and I'm here on behalf of the Sardar.
Could someone turn on the speaker's microphone, please?
Are we good now?
Yeah, Chief.
All right. Thank you. I'm Deve Sardar, and I'm here on behalf of the People's Promise Youth Division. I'm here with the same young lady that talked, talked about gun control and talked about legislation and how we're sitting here in Shreveport doing nothing. Shreveport is currently 2% safer than other cities in the United States. Let me put that to your perspective here. There's about 20,000 cities in America, and 2% safer than 20,000 would be Shreveport is safer than 400 other cities in the United States. And majority of this is due to gun violence. And we're doing here, you all, the city of Shreveport, are doing nothing to help, control, and regulate gun violence. We're waiting for something, and nothing's happening. Gun violence is the highest it's seen in Shreveport, and Shreveport is one of the major cities in Louisiana that is contributing to the violence and the violence index that we see in Louisiana. Louisiana is fifth in the entire state with the most violence, fifth, top five. And Shreveport is a major contributor to that. And we're doing nothing on gun control. We're doing nothing to initiate and enact legislation to end gun violence. We're waiting for something from Washington, waiting for something in Baton Rouge, but nothing's happening. And I implore you all to take the initiative, enact legislation to help gun control, make the streets safe for the people. I'm scared. I have a sister, and she's scared to walk in the streets of Shreveport. You know how sad I feel whenever my sister says, no, I do not want to go walking. Take me in your car. I feel that Shreveport has great architecture, but nobody can see it because we're not safe on the streets. I'm asking you all to do something. Do something, enact legislation for gun control. Make something happen to make the city's streets safe, safe for the people, safe for the children, safe for the senior citizens, and safe for all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Kristen Thompson.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Kirsten Thompson, and I'm the Chief Communications Officer of the People's Promise Youth Division. And I am that 14-year-old who Autumn was referencing, who is scared in her city. I was here last week with my fellow members to speak at the Commissioner meeting about ordinance number 6238, addressing firearms loaded with more than 20 rounds in a vehicle. And the Commissioners are one body of power we can bring this to. And now it's time to talk to you all about this issue that Shreveport knows very well. I know all of you honorable council members have watched the news and seen the faces of mothers crying for their children. I'm not going to repeat the stories because there are too many to recount. And the question I have for you, council, is what are you gonna do about it? The people of Shreveport are sick and tired of resolutions running in circles with nothing being done for us. It's pathetic that a 14-year-old must bring this to you because we have not seen anything being done. And if you think for one second that the people of Shreveport aren't hurting, watching, and waiting for something to be done, then you're wrong. Is it for the paycheck? Is it because of your apathy? The youth are sick of seeing our peers getting murdered in the city we call home. And it is one thing to get justice for the lives we have lost, and it is another thing to prevent this from happening in the first place. And the question is no longer, will the gun violence in Shreveport get worse? The question is, council, what are you gonna do about it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, council.
Mr. Chairman, I want to acknowledge the efforts of these young people that have come to us today to discuss gun violence. Of course, we all share their concern. We all recognize that gun violence has taken far too many lives in our community and in communities across the country. I do want to encourage each of you to carry this message to Baton Rouge. As you may know, the state legislature many years ago passed a law that, with very narrow exceptions, prohibits municipalities and, for that matter, parish governments from enacting legislation to control guns or to place any limits on gun possession or use. And so while it is always appropriate to express concern about an issue as serious as this one in this chamber and in the government chamber, the elected officials who have the power to impose reasonable restrictions on firearms are state legislators. And so I hope that you will, you will continue with this message and share it with our representatives in the state government because they have the ability to, to move this issue forward to a much greater extent in this body. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I also add something?
Ma'am, you can't speak out, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Also, what Councilman Nicholson is saying, you're speaking in reference to Commissioner Johnson's legislation at the Parish Commission. He's looking at that legislation because of the limitations that we have from the state and seeking Attorney General's opinion on what it is that we can and cannot do.
Thank you. Will we have any executive appointments tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman, we have Metropolitan Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Mr. Tony Tebow present and Brian Crawford, Chief Brian Crawford, and Michael Brandon present today, if y'all would like for them to come up. Starting with Ms. Tony Tebow.
Ms. Tebow.
I thought you was here.
Is Ms. Tebow present?
No. We have Brian Crawford.
Chief, would you come?
You're not gonna ask me to pray again. I'm being good, councilman. Yes, sir.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, I'll just say thank you for your willingness to serve the city in yet another capacity. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, councilman. Appreciate it.
Any others? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Who else do we have? Ms. Whitehorn?
Michael Brandon, is he present?
Brandon? All right. Thank you. He's not here.
We try to have him here tomorrow.
Yes, sir. There are no items on the consent agenda of introduction to be adopted. Mr. Whitehorn, would you proceed with regular, regular legislation, agenda legislation?
Resolution 80, selecting the times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport for a period commencing July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Resolution 81, approving the budget of the Caddo Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. Resolution 82, thanking President-Chancellor Dr. Ray L. Belton for his commitment, contributions, and years of leadership at Southern University and A&amp;M College. Resolution 83, to dedicate the 7,900 block of Aaron Place in honor of Velma Johnson for her commitment and contributions to the Eden Garden community and the city of Shreveport. Resolution 84, an emergency resolution to recommend and encourage the mayor to purchase four to six Hellcats for the Shreveport Police Department and hire a contractor to install cameras throughout the city of Shreveport as soon as possible to aid in the reduction and prevention of crime in the city. Resolution 85, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for Bill Cockrell Swimming Pool Repair Bid RFQ Number 22-524. Resolution 86, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, purchasing agent to reject all bids received for Airport Park Pool Renovations Bid RFQ Number 22-525. Resolution 87, declaring the intentions of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, the issuer, to proceed with the issuance of not to exceed $62,500,000 aggregate principal amount of taxable or tax-exempt general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series, making application to the State Board Commission for approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is Chief Smith here?
Yes. He was just a second ago.
About Chief White. I wanted to speak to Ms. Glover regarding the Hellcats. I wanted to speak to, answer your question.
Can you speak?
Can you hear me?
Nah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi. I wanted to speak to Resolution 84 and let Ms. Glover know we will not be purchasing four to six Hellcats. However, what we will be purchasing are vehicles for the CRU unit, and I'll let Chief Wayne Smith speak to that today.
Okay, it's been a long time coming because of personnel, obviously, but some years ago, we had a unit called Community Response Unit, and that was a group of officers, six or seven, that they specifically targeted hotspots where things were happening that we need immediate attention. Well, with times the way they are right now, we're reactivating that unit. Matter of fact, they went online today. And to equip them, the council, y'all were so wonderful in providing us explorers to outfit our fleet of patrol officers. We had to take seven of those to put this unit into action right away. And we have looked at prices, so in the future, we hope that possibly y'all could help us to fund seven vehicles so we can put those explorers back on the line, back in patrol. We need around 75 or so vehicles in our pool so that officers that does not live inside the city, when they come to work, they'll have a vehicle to drive. And obviously, vehicles go down for service, and we need that many in our pool to keep functioning. But we took seven of those out to stand up CRU. So they are available to order considerably less than the Hellcats. It would cost somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 and, well, close to $300,000 to purchase seven vehicles and fully equip them. So that's what we asking the council for, for assistance with that today. But CRU is up and running. They're hitting the streets today, and we pray and hope, we feel confident that you will see a difference in your neighborhood, and Shreveport will see a difference in the reduction of crimes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I'm glad to hear that. I've been advocating for the CRUs to be back in business since we got on this council. Councilman Nicholson and I provided some funding last year for eight units, I believe, that were supposed to be used for either CRU or, at that point, I think OSI was kind of falling in. What's happened to those vehicles?
They're online. They went to the SRT team. Their vehicles were 10, 11 years old, and that's what the reason for those. But they're, they're online and doing well.
So those eight vehicles are, okay.
Absolutely.
So, so I'll support whatever you need. I would, I would go a step further. If you need seven, let's get 10 where you have a few in reserve if you need them.
Okay. The Dodge Chargers have, have been wonderful, well-accepted in the community. They've been performing well, look, look very good, and so we're hoping to purchase the same kind of vehicle. And the prices are not as bad as you think it is. On the state contract, those charges, we paid 27.5 for them on the state contract, and it took about 17 to get it outfitted, so 42.5 put that vehicle in service. and it took about 17 to get it outfitted, so $42.5 put that vehicle in service. Talking with the manufacturers today, we wouldn't be able to get them this year, but if we get our orders in next year, those vehicles would probably be available to us.
Good deal. Well, whatever budget amendment we need to do to get you what you need vehicle-wise, I'm 100% behind you.
Okay.
So it would not be the $80,000, Ms. Glover. It would not be.
Not at this time. You can do it tomorrow. Anything else, Chief?
Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Ms. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of resolution not to be adopted prior to June 28, 2022?
Resolution 88, to repeal Amendment Number 1 on Resolution Number 87 of 2021, which added a clause to the contract between the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, and Sea at Wisconsin F LLC, requiring a performance bond to be provided by the contractor and to amend other portions of the contract to be consistent with the request for a proposal. Resolution 89, authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between Ro Omega and Friends, I, Inc. Resolution 90, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Louisiana Department of Treasury and the state of Louisiana. Resolution 91, stating the city of Shreveport's approval of Studio Network, Shreveport, I LLC, partial transfer of ownership to 624 Downtown Lofts LLC. Resolution 92, stating the city of Shreveport's approval of Studio Network, Shreveport, I LLC, partial transfer of ownership to Lob Palmas Group Lofts LLC. Resolution 93, employing professionals with respect to the issuance of the city of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, not exceeding $62,500,000 of general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series on taxable or tax-exempt basis.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Ms. Whitehorn, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to June 28, 2022?
Ordinance 81, amending the 2022 budget for Street Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 82, amending the 2022 budget for Capital Projects Fund. Ordinance 83, amending the 2022 budget for General Fund. Ordinance 84, amending the 2022 Airport Capital Improvement Fund Budget. Ordinance 85, amending the 2022 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 86, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 87, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 88, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 89, providing for the issuance and sale of General Obligation Bond Series 2022 of the city of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form of fixing the details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the application of the proceeds thereof to the project as defined herein, providing for all other matters in connection therewith.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items? Ms. Whitehorn, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Ordinance 67, amending the 2022 budget for the Community Development Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance 68, amending the 2022 budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 69, amending the 2022 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ordinance 70, amending the 2022 Retained Risk Fund Budget. Ordinance 71, amending the 2022 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ordinance 72, amending the 2022 General Fund Budget. Ordinance 73, declaring the city's interest in certain vacant properties as surplus and our intention to transfer certain vacant property to the Shreveport Boja African-American Chamber of Commerce. Ordinance 74, amending Chapter 2, Section 2-27 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Shreveport to reapportion the several council districts of the city and to otherwise provide with respect thereto in their several amendments. Ordinance 75, to amend various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, Unified Development Code for the purpose of clarifying and updating various code provisions. Ordinance 75, to amend various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, Unified Development Code for the purpose of clarifying and updating various codes and provisions. Ordinance 76, zoning case number 21-219-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of Quentin Street, approximately 140 feet east of Hearn Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-2 multifamily residential district to C-2 corridor commercial district. Ordinance 77, zoning case number 22-23-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of West 70th Street, approximately 1,400 feet west of West Berkoon's Industrial Loop, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-A, R-A Rural Agricultural Zoning District to I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Zoning case number 22-52-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west corner of West 71st Street and St. Vincent Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. R-1-7 to C-1. Zoning case number 22-66-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport by Development Code by rezoning property located southwest corner of Wallace Avenue and West 72nd Street, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-1-7 single-family residential zoning district to R-2 multifamily residential zoning district. Ordinance 80, zoning case number 22-67-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located north side of West 70th Street, approximately 700 feet, approximately 760 feet east of Dinkins Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from C-4 heavy commercial zoning district to I-1 light industrial zoning district.
Thank you. Will we have any questions or comments on any of these?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance 73, I'm assuming that's the old, I guess it's the old Triple Federal Credit Union on Jewella, is that right, that we're gonna donate to the African-American Chamber?
That's correct.
Where are we on the donation for the Chamber building? I know that it was passed in November, are we any closer to getting that signed and...
It has been rerouted, the official, the first one was misplaced. We got it rerouted and re-signed, and I believe all of the signatures are now in place.
Okay, so it will be officially, because I know they've been waiting on some things with the roof and some other things like that, so I just want to make sure. I applaud the city for giving this building on Jewella, well, and the one downtown to the Chambers. I think that it's the right thing to do, and I'm in the, I think we're in the business of not acquiring more properties, but let's let somebody else take care of them. So I think it's a good idea, but I just want to make sure that we close one out before we move on to another one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have any table legislation to be removed from the agenda today?
Not that I'm aware of.
We have any property standards, ABO appeals to consider today?
There are no appeals, Mr. Chair.
We have any MPCZDA appeals to consider tomorrow?
There are none.
Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we received an appointment letter from Mr. Michael Corbin to the Downtown Development Authority on June 10, which will be subject to confirmation on June 28.
Thank you. Are there any reports from offices, boards, and committees? Executive session, see none. Is there any other thing else to come before? Anything else? If nothing?